Hey. Good afternoon, everybody. Rob Fuller here. Let's talk about it. My not my trusty sidekick Jonathan Starr. We're going to talk about some things federal, state and local today. Most of them, I think election season. So a lot of it's going to handle around the election. Yeah. How are you feeling about it all?
You know, you you start looking at polls and you start getting overconfident.
Yeah.
It's going to be an interesting play out. Obviously, the October surprises are starting to hit.
Yeah.
And I don't, there may not be validity to them, but things are starting to be cast around. I think everybody looks back at Mueller and what happened back then. Or Comey and what happened back then with the emails. And so they try to find their secret antidote to influence it. And I don't know that'll work, but.
I think it's AI. You're right. I mean, it's kind of amazing. In the about the last 30 days to the last month of election season, the stuff that both sides started throwing out there, right? This, you know, I mean, I, and again, I don't care what political side you fall to, left, right, whatever. I think it's indigenous amongst both sides that they try to spin it as best as they can for their candidate. And you know, I mean, it's interesting though, you know, the stuff that you see come out, like you'll hear a whisper of this. And then the media doesn't pick it up because.
That's what's been interesting.
It's because one side, and then you'll hear a whisper of this, and the media does pick it up because it's on the other side. And it's like, can we really stop? And I'm just going to say it, and I know you're a media guy, but our mainstream media is so biased in this country. It's not news anymore. I believe it's more like propaganda.
Yep. You're right. What's been interesting, though, is these October surprises that they've been trying to get dropped. The mainstream media hasn't been picking it up.
A lot of it they haven't.
And that's been interesting. And that's the more recent stuff. I know that there's stuff farther back that what you what you said exactly has happened.
Yeah.
But recently, and it's early, it still could be picked up. There's probably still a lot of verification that's being done. But what I read is that they got pitched to the major sources and they want to take them. They're like, no.
Well, I think some of them are a little leery anymore, right? I mean, they have been under so much scrutiny for the last few years. I mean, especially just like, let's use the CBS thing with the 60 Minutes interview that happened.
My, my, my.
Yeah, well, let's dive right in, right? I mean, you know, and again, I don't care whose political candidate it is or isn't. But it's really funny. That when you see something from one source, say with with former President Trump in it, that they don't edit anything, or when they do edit it, they
disparage.
They disparage and 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 use it as a way to attack him. Whereas with Kamala Harris, the other presidential candidate, like the CBS interview, they literally altered it. So she didn't sound like she didn't know what she was talking about. She sounded like she gave a small, short, you know, couple word answer and.
That's, that's incredible. And the, when you watch them both, you're like, this wasn't even editing what she said.
Yeah.
This was like they went and made her say something else.
They cut it from a different portion of the interview and placed it. Hey, this will look good in the little teaser.
That was crazy.
Well, and I mean, you know, like, I guess the thing as as an American citizen that really concerns me. How long has this been going on? You know, I think we've talked before, the start of social media, was it before that? You know, like, I remember a movie growing up, I believe it had Robert De Niro in it. And I think it was called Wag the Dog.
Okay.
Do you remember that?
No.
So basically, it was, if I remember us correctly, it was about a person running a political campaign.
Okay.
And they were having trouble. So they had somebody come in and create a whole false story. I mean, this was the whole premise of the movie, the whole false story. I believe it was in the 90s. I'm going to look this up after the. But to change the outcome of this election and this race and and I mean, you know, was that like, was that where this all started? Somebody thought, you know, if they can do it in a movie, we can do it in real life? Or how does that work?
I've heard that life mimics what happens on those screens.
Is that what it is?
I've heard that.
Yeah.
You see a lot of the agendas, they start there and it starts out as being crazy.
Well, I mean, is it fair? Like, is it fair to the American public, you know, for Facebook or Twitter or Instagram or any of them to censor a story and say, hey, we don't want you to hear this because we don't feel that it's right or it's real. Or hey, this is the information that we want you to digest, but it isn't everything like.
So that, and that's a really interesting discussion because it's not fair to the American people. But is it? Is it fair to limit the business? Now I'll say this, they should be open about it. It, the problem with it is not that they're doing it. The problem is that they're saying that they don't do it. I think, I think that's where the problem is at with it all.
Absolutely.
Because if they want to be a left wing, they'll like Elon Musk is more open than any other social media.
100%.
Yeah. CEO. And so I think the problem is that they're just not open enough.
Well, and I think you're right. I think if you look at section 230, well, which protects social media companies and those other companies from being sued because there's nothing anybody can do to them.
Yeah.
So why would they feel like they shouldn't do that? You know, I mean, and and I don't care if it's social media. I don't care if it's CBS, ABC, Fox News. Give us the news and let us decide. I am really, I think a lot of people would say this too. I'm really tired of everybody deciding for me. What information I need to hear? Put it out there and let me decide what's real and what isn't real.
Growing up, I think, I think Fox had it as we report, you decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a tagline we could all go back to.
Absolutely.
You decide.
But I mean, it, it has gotten so drastic, you know, and again, let's go back to the two presidential candidates and 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 talk about that. Take a look at President Trump from 2016 and 2020, when he was running, every story about malfeasance with a female that could be put out there about him was put out there about him. And now here we are in this election cycle, and you have some weird, crazy stories coming about, coming out about Doug Emhoff, Kamala's husband. And nobody will pick them up or say anything about him. I mean, it's very reminiscent of the Hunter Biden laptop story. Like, you guys knock it off.
Right.
Knock it off. The, put the news out there and let us figure out what is right and what is wrong and make our decisions based off of that. I, I mean, and and again, I'm not about censorship, but I think to some degree, if these companies don't want to be honest and want to spin everything, then they should have their moniker of a news agency taken away.
Yeah.
They are not a news agency. They are the National Enquirer now doing their own thing.
Right.
And instead of us buying it at the grocery store stand, we just get to hear it on TV or news or whatever every day.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. You always get nervous about regulation, but it does seem like there's something that's missing with.
And if there's nothing you and I can do, right? Like, we can put a story up on Facebook or we can do this and that. And they can take it down and they can put, they can hide behind any lie that they want. Oh, it's, it's hate speech. Oh, it's threatening. Oh, it's this, it's that. But it isn't any of those things. It is just isn't something you like, but we can't do anything about it because they're protected.
Yeah.
I, you know, that has to change.
When Google is changing the searches and stuff like that, hiding stuff.
Yeah.
And and promoting stuff that they want to be heard. I've heard that they're a little bit more quiet this time. I was listening to something, was talking about how the, this is a interesting take. The Democrats could be losing control, if you would, over like Mark Zuckerberg and even Google because of the pressure that Congress has put on them over the past few years.
Yeah.
That suddenly they're like, you know what? You guys aren't our friends anymore.
Yeah.
And they're looking like supposedly Zuckerberg is more of a libertarian now than than Democrat. I know that's.
I believe it when I see it.
Yeah. 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 I know. It would be, it's a stretch thing, but but their premise was that they were saying was perhaps Musk could build a relationship with them with some of those people and Pullman because they'd be on a similar level. And and potentially you would see a little more even keel because I mean, yeah, if this isn't something that is like left or right, a left or right statement. I'm just saying if the country continues in the way it is, there's going to be some major things that are going to go against social media.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, there already has been, but there'll be more.
100%. Yeah. I mean, at some point, somebody on some social media platform is going to do something so egregious that everybody's going to be like, enough, you know? Hopefully it doesn't have to become a violent thing, but I, everybody, I mean, we're getting, a lot of us are getting to that point already where we're like, hey, I mean, if I see something on TikTok or Facebook or Twitter or any of them, I don't even believe 90% of it.
Can't.
You know, because so much is faked anymore, you know, or half truths or half lies or whatever you want to call it.
That's what's so hard about these October surprises. No, is you don't like, you literally don't know what to believe.
No, you don't.
And now you have AI.
Yeah.
That's a terrible thing.
Well, you know, to let AI, I was reading an article right before we came on today. I don't know if you've seen this. There's a thing out there where Alexa from Amazon is answering questions about the election and giving people advice to vote for Harris Walls.
Okay.
Why would Alexa care or give any advice on who you should vote for or shouldn't vote for? Again, those things in our life need to go away.
Right.
Right? Well, I mean, there's other ways to become educated than to ask Alexa who I should vote for or something like that, you know?
Absolutely. So then Google is getting, they, I believe they've been told that they're a monopoly. So they're going to have to get broken up a little bit.
I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, probably. It is a good thing, I'm sure. But again, that came down while there was a blue administration. And so that also kind of puts a little rift there. So they're not getting that protection that perhaps they thought they would or were hoping they would.
Well, right. I mean, all of a sudden, you know, they go from, hey, help us win this election. We'll make things better for you to now, hey, we got to break you up because you guys are doing too many bad things. And you know, everybody's kind of like, whoa, what happened here? What happened to the status quo? And
Yeah.
But I think you see that a lot in national politics, right? I mean, you see it, let's use Joe Manchin, right? Joe Manchin running in in West Virginia. Hey, if you sign the Affordable Care Act and back us, we'll do the pipeline stuff in your state. So he goes ahead and does it. And then they're like, oh, yeah, never mind. We're not going to do that. He's like, well, I'm done being a Democrat then. And now I'm an independent and like.
I will control Congress.
When are we going to learn as the public, as the American people, as as whatever, when are we going to learn to make up our own minds instead of just regurgitating what some national company who has a stake in this says?
Absolutely. So have you followed many of the interviews that have been going on with these candidates on the podcasts? So for instance, Trump was on Patrick Bet David.
Oh, I, a little bit of them. Yeah. I mean, I know. Excuse me. I saw the other day that Trump is going to go on Joe Rogan and do two, two hours on Joe Rogan.
Records on Friday.
Yep.
That's crazy.
I, you know, I mean, I think that's good because it's really surprising anymore. You know, here we are filming a podcast.
Oh, yeah. It's the future.
Well, how many people go and find podcasts to get information from? I mean, you know, my wife is constantly listening to How to Murder Your Husband podcast. And so I, I fret for my.
Yeah, very comfy over there.
But like, podcasts are kind of becoming, let's call them the half hour sitcom that that we used to watch all the time growing up and and or the half hour news show that we used to listen to or whatever. So.
Allows it. It's way more accessible. I think it's been great. It's also interesting. Like, so Trump was on, and I don't know. Harris has not done as many as Trump. That's just a fair statement.
She did one last night though, with Anderson Cooper. Did you see that?
Yeah, I have seen some comments on that and a couple of clips. And it didn't go so well.
No, words, word salad city, I think, was what somebody posted. It's tough to answer hard questions. I know.
Yeah, you've been there. So he's been, Trump went on like Bussing with the Boys, which is two former football players.
Yep.
He went on the Full Send Podcast, which is not one that anybody should listen to.
Okay.
But they're young kid, younger people. They're probably in their.
So they're trying to appeal to different.
Early 30s and very, very, a lot of hard language. Well, on, I think Trump went on Theo Von, but Vance did.
I saw Vance on Theo Von. Yeah.
Did you listen to it?
I, about half of it I got through.
Did you see a clip about cocaine?
I did not see that clip. No.
So Von goes down this rabbit hole of it's sad that we live in a country where cocaine is not legal.
Oh, my.
Vance just starts dying laughing. He's like, I'm gonna have to use that line. It's like, he's like, well, if we win, he broke. So I like Vance and and a lot of the tweets or posts that came out of that were positive towards Vance. They're like, I thought this guy was weird. He's actually just one of the boys.
Yeah.
Is a lot of the things that came from it. But I have been going with the line that he broke of Von broke Vance because the guy, like, there's so much random stuff. Vance almost didn't know what to do.
Oh, like the part that I did get to watch, you could see some of Vance's facial expressions with some of the stuff Theo would say and you'd be like, okay, well, let's talk about, you know, even you're like, why are we talking about this? This is a political race.
Exactly. So it was great.
Well, it's good to see, I think, a little bit of that, you know, because I, for instance, that one there, it kind of really humanizes the person behind the politician, right? I mean, you get to see and hear some things that you don't see on Fox or MSNBC or CNN or any of those, you know, so those, I think those things hold their, and again, as I said, we're seeing more and more people rely on the podcasts, you know, to go get information because they don't trust the regular media. They don't trust the regular internet. And so let's see what's being said.
What do you think will happen with the Rogan podcast and Trump?
Oh, I, I mean, honestly, I, let's just take a look at what President Trump has done over the last two weeks, right? He went to a barber shop in the Bronx and was hugely popular. He went to McDonald's and served people food, you know, I mean, the guy, in my opinion, is hitting it out of the park like with the, so I think he'll get on the Joe Rogan Show and I think he will absolutely crush it.
So, and it's interesting timing because it's right when he's spiking because
Yeah.
For the last two, since Harris entered the race, it's been like, oh, man.
Yeah.
This is, this is an interesting race now.
Right?
Yeah. And the last two weeks, there's been a little bit of a change that's really starting to happen.
Yeah.
So it's almost bad timing for Trump.
Well, is, I mean, is there ever bad timing for Donald Trump? Honestly?
Yeah, he has pretty good spin zone.
He does, you know, and I mean, the thing about it, like, okay, so Harris got the bump after they kicked Biden to the curb.
Which was an expected thing.
Right. You're going to get that all the time. And then the media, you know, like I was reading a thing the other day, she is literally the first presidential candidate created solely by the media. She has no record to run on, right? As far as a Senator or as a Vice President. She has no credentials necessarily, other than, hey, I'm currently the Vice President. And and the media spin around her was what created this boom. Well, and now she gets out there and people hear her talk. And all of a sudden you see it go wah, 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 you know, and I mean, it's going backwards and and I, you and I were talking earlier. So just the other day, I was listening to a couple of different podcasts and they were saying how the three most recent polls, national polls that are all trustworthy, the Real Clear Politics, I believe it was Rasmussen, and I forget the third one.
538 or no?
No, it wasn't 538. No. But anyway, that all of them, all of a sudden have gone from Kamala Harris up one or two points to Trump being up two to three points across the board nationally. And when you start digging into some of those, you know, again, these aren't necessarily the polls where they're polling 100 people. 70 of them are Democrats, 15 of them are liberal or independent, and 15 of them are conservative. You know, these are pretty much flat across the board, 30, 30, 30 type things. And so what you're seeing is you're seeing more people in that independent middle category start to go, you know what? I don't like that she doesn't ever say anything. I don't like what she does say when she says it. And this guy proved to us for four years what he would do and how he is. And oh, look, you know, they really don't want him in there. They've tried to shoot him. They've tried to prosecute him. They've tried to do everything they could. Why are they fighting so hard against this guy when what he did for us was really pretty good?
Yeah.
You know?
No, it's true.
But the other thing that's really interesting in those polls, and if you listen to these, some of these pundits on both sides talk, and I mean, it's not just conservative guys talking, it's the liberals too. They are very concerned about the Senate. They believe right now that the Republicans will go from a 49, 51 minority to, they figure we'll have, the conservative side will have between 52 and 56 seats in the Senate, which again, the last time, you know, either side had 56 seats in the Senate was back in the early 90s. Okay. You know, I mean, it hasn't happened in a long time.
Wow. That's crazy. Yeah. Because 51 is very tight. 52, though, you begin to, I mean, 51, the powers fell. But if you get a mansion in there.
If you have somebody who's out because of illness, right? Like, let's take Dianne Feinstein. She was gone for months not being able to vote because she was ill.
Right.
Or you have somebody that all of a sudden goes independent or or does not side with your side. Yeah, you got a thin, thin margin.
Yeah. Right. I think for a while, the Republicans had to be worried about Murkowski, right?
Oh, I think there's always been a couple, you know, Murkowski, when when Liz Cheney was on there, you know, I mean, speaking of independents, did you see Tulsi Gabbard the other night at the Trump rally? Like, how freaking hilarious is that? You know, I mean, hey, I was a Democrat. I'm just going to go be an independent because I don't like everything you guys are doing. But you guys have done so much dumb stuff. I'm now going to go to turn to the other side, right?
And so the Democrats try to pull on theirs that have done that. But I mean, you got, you got Lisa. Sorry, Gabbard.
Yeah.
I, Tulsi, Tulsi, there you go, Tulsi Gabbard. And then you got RFK, two, two, like mainstream people that have done that. Like, like, go find that.
Well, and I mean, you had a bunch of them too. You know, wasn't Sinema from Arizona? She ran as a Democrat, didn't she? She beat Carrie Lake.
Right, right.
So, but now she's an independent. Like, how many people, I guess, would be my question? How many politicians that we see nationally all the time have to leave this one party, even, not even to go to the other party, but just to say, hey, I can't align myself with it before people start taking notice and say, hey, there's a problem here.
Right. So so what does, like, this year, it's going to be an interesting race. You won't be able to relax until about two weeks after the election, because that's when you'll finally find out who wins.
Do you think Maricopa County, that's what you're referring to?
So.
Do you think that's going to be the whole holdup for the race? Because I don't think it's going to be that close.
I don't think, I don't think it'll be the whole holdup. It might, it's, it could be the holdup for Arizona being called, but I don't think it'll be for the entire thing.
But I don't think, I'll be honest with you. I don't think Arizona is going to matter. I think Trump's going to win wholeheartedly, all out.
Because all he has to do is when I think it's like George, well, North Carolina.
Georgia, North Carolina and Pennsylvania.
And it's done. And and it, and you can go Pennsylvania or I believe there's a couple of ors in there. Like, he needs Pennsylvania, but there's, but that'd be the clear.
Well, if he, if he doesn't get Pennsylvania, then he would need either Michigan and Wisconsin and or Arizona and Nevada, if I'm not mistaken. However, it would, you know, whatever combination would get him there.
So, so do you, how do you feel about Wisconsin?
Well, and here's the thing, I'll tell you, you know, again, I try to tend to watch a lot of this polling stuff, you know, because to me, it's interesting. You know, we've seen over the last eight years, let's take 2016, 2020, and now 2024, and everything in between. You've seen all the polling stuff, you know, polling was inaccurate in 2016 because everybody had Hillary winning, right?
Yeah.
Polling was inaccurate in 2020 while they had Biden winning. It wasn't by the margin that he actually won by, because what did he win by? About 1.1% nationally?
On the day of.
Yeah.
Or he lost the day of, but he won, he won the day.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. The, the mail in stuff.
Man, that night was crazy.
2000 mules. I'll just recommend that video if anybody hasn't seen it. But the thing about it is, is if you go back and both sides will say the same thing. Every time that Trump is in an election, he under polls, right? So if Trump, you know, if Trump, like with the Biden stuff, they said it is in Wisconsin. Trump was going to lose Wisconsin by 8%. And he actually lost Wisconsin by like 1.3 or 1.4%. So they say that he under polls by about five or six percent. So if they say nationally now he's winning by two to 3%, it's probably somewhere actually between seven and 9%. And so same thing with Wisconsin. They say it's razor thin, right? But if he is underperforming in polls, because as they say, more people are willing to say, yep, I'm voting for Harris and Walls than on the other side saying, hey, yep, I'm voting for Trump because there's such a negative response. If you say, hey, I'm voting for Trump to somebody that you aren't known to be a conservative, right? I mean, so people are like, yeah, I'm not going to tell you. It's none of your business, but I'm going to go out there and I'm going to vote for the guy that actually did right by the country, that made me more money, that helped my family.
Right.
You know, I mean, kept us out of wars. I, I think so. To answer your question, yes, I think Wisconsin, while it shows it's close, I think Trump is going to win it more than we think.
So Trump wins Wisconsin.
Yep.
He wins Georgia. He wins North Carolina. Georgia could be interesting.
Well, again, they said that's razor thin, right? With half percent or something like that. But if you look again, all the early voting, have you seen any of those?
It's been Republican, favorite Republicans.
Yeah. Pennsylvania, did you see? So Pennsylvania is one of the states that requires you to register to vote.
Yeah.
For what party you're going to vote for. So if you voted Democrat in 2020, you now have to re-register as a Republican to vote for somebody else. Now, did you see the numbers coming out of there?
What?
250,000 voters have changed from Democrat to Republican in the state of Pennsylvania. 55,000 of them just directly in oh, gosh, Pittsburgh.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, big numbers coming out of these hugely held Democrat strongholds that are changing their votes or saying they're going to change from a Democrat to a Republican.
But but there's, you said saying they can't vote Democrat now.
No, if you register as a Republican in the state of Pennsylvania, from what I understand, you can't get your ballot that day and say, hey, show me a Democrat name.
Gotcha.
You have to vote the, the.
How do you feel about that?
Well, again, I, I mean, I live in North Dakota, the only state I believe that you don't have to register to vote in. And I'm fine with the way we do it because I should be able to make up my mind when I go in there, not tell you a week in advance or you're in advance.
Yeah. And I should be able to vote for a Democrat president and a Republican senator.
I could, I could, anything I want, right? I mean, why do they restrict you to one party or the other?
Interesting. So wins Wisconsin.
Okay.
If he won Wisconsin to be, and he lost Nevada, which I know that that's also an interesting one.
Yep. But I mean, that's six, that's six votes, right? Or six electoral votes?
He's nine short without Arizona, Michigan and Pennsylvania. He needs to win one of those.
Yep.
If you won Wisconsin.
And I mean, right now, out of all those you just named, Pennsylvania.
Is the most likely.
Is the most likely. I mean, again, the the highest margin.
That's because of Musk.
You know, I think the Elon Musk thing is fantastic. Like, he is such a polarizing figure in our society, right? I mean, the guy is a genius. He's leading. You know, I, I'm not going to be, like, I'm amazed by some of the stuff he does and says, you know, like, he doesn't care, right? He doesn't care what we think. He wants to change the world. And like, I don't know if you saw a couple of weeks ago where they released the robots.
Yeah.
I mean, dude, we're literally five to 10 years from the movie iRobot, where they're in our homes, doing our dishes and cooking our food and stuff like that.
Buying one?
Oh, God, yes. You know, I mean, I'd like, my wife won't have to cook and clean. I won't have to cook and clean, you know? The bad thing will be for the kids. They won't have to want to do anything, right? So then what are we going to raise? No, I mean, but it's, it's just an amazing time. Sorry. It's just an amazing time as far as technology with this AI. You know, we all talk about and remember the computer and internet and how it changed the world. Well, I think this is on a whole different level. I mean, you know, when we get into this AI stuff and, you know, you're talking. I was, I was again, yesterday, reading and doing some research on AI and medicine because of my son.
Okay.
And I came across this article and video about, they now have AI, oncologists now have AI programs that have been written to check not biopsies, but like a mammogram or any x-rays or any CAT scan type things to look for cancer precursors that the physicians may miss. So the oncologist goes through it, and then they run the data through the program and AI spits out and says, yeah, no, this, this is normal. There, there's no precursors there. It looks like it might be, but don't worry about a biopsy. And they said that it's changing about 70% of patients follow up and and and, you know, you don't have to come in for a biopsy anymore. We're not worried about it. So.
It's a good side of AI.
Yeah. I mean, then there's the evil side.
Yeah. And that's what's so hard with AI is it's not the replacing jobs and all that. It's what we talked about earlier, where you got it, being able to, people using it for evil. And you always have that. It's computers. There's hacking that goes on as much because computers do, you have to fight things. It's going to be interesting to see how that develops over time.
Well, and they're going to have to, I think, be able to put some kind of restraints, controls on how it's used, especially like you take an election like this.
Yeah.
Right? What could the AI possibly make up to pull at everybody's heartstrings or change everybody's minds? And and again, control an election that is so far out of the people's grasp, they don't even realize it's going on like.
It wouldn't be hard at all.
No, I, you know, those things are going to have to be implemented, I think, before we get to us, again, unrestricted in research and development and medicine and everything else. But when you get into politics and some of the other stuff, I think you're going to have to put some restraints on it.
Yeah, for sure. So what do you think four years from now, when we're going through this election process again? What does it look like? Like, what does the Republican side look like? Does Harris run again if she doesn't win?
No, I don't think so. I, I, I mean, from what I've been able to figure out myself, right? Four years ago, when she ran for president, everybody hated her, right?
That's the thing that's unique about her.
They, they picked her as Vice President and nobody liked her as Vice President, right? And now they've put her out there as the political candidate for president. And if she loses, what, what is she going to have to run on? Like, I mean, why would she? what, what is she gonna have to run on? Like, I mean, why would she go at it again? And I think the Democrat Party, um, as a whole already realizes she is not the candidate of the future. If she makes it through this round, she would be very lucky. Um, but that's my opinion.
So then, if assumedly you would have Trump, if Trump won, this is only if Trump won.
Yep. JD Vance.
Vance would be the Republican candidate. And, I mean, seems like his popularity, it, it seems like the timing for him is decent. As long as he does a decent job, seems like his popularity is rising, right?
I agree with that.
So it's gonna be a close race. Say he wins, and what was weird about it is the whole eight-year thing is gonna be broken, right? Cause tip, the last way it's gone for the last however many years.
Right.
Uh, since the Bush and, and Clinton is eight years. So Clinton went eight years and then Bush went eight years. And then Obama went eight years. And then Trump went four.
Yep.
And then Biden went four. And Biden wasn't gonna run, which is the first time since early nineteen twenties, I believe, Lyndon B. Johnson or something like that. Um, and then, uh, um, so then you'd have Trump perhaps for four years. Does Vance get eight years? Or, okay, sorry, and I interrupt you.
No, you're good.
But I ask you a question that I quickly ask another one. Does Vance get full eight years or does he get four years, get beat on what, like Trump did, somebody else served four years and then he comes back four years later and we have this weird cycle that begins.
I don't think so. I think you're seeing this weird cycle right now. Um, at least in my mind, I think we're seeing this weird cycle right now because of the propaganda, and I'm gonna use that word, that was put out in twenty twenty, all the lies, right? The Russia collusion, the fact that they didn't give all the information on the Hunter Biden laptop. I mean, they did everything they could. I don't believe, uh, Trump really would, would have, should have lost that if, if the truth had been told, right? So I think that's the only, and, and then you get Biden and Harris in there and they flush our toilet down the, you know, they'd flush our country down the toilet. And, and that's why we're seeing only four years now. I, I, I mean, there's no way that any sane human adult being can go, hey, I'm better off today than I was four years ago when they took over. I mean, we've gone through COVID, they mismanaged that, they mismanaged the border, they've mismanaged the economy. I mean, what else do we need? So I, I think, I think that's why we're seeing this weird thing. And I, and I'll be honest with you. I think what you're seeing across the country too, you know, you're seeing organizations like labor unions and different places that have never, ever backed Republicans or Republican presidents. Now all of a sudden say, hey, these guys are more our people than these guys over here are, right? I mean, you know, and, and let's take the Kamala thing the other night. I don't know if you saw the clip where the people in the crowd were screaming, uh, Christ is King, uh, Jesus is Lord. And she looks up and she says, hey, you guys are at the wrong rally. Are you kidding me? You just marginalized ninety percent of the Christian population in the United States by doing and saying that one thing. That is not gonna help you. Um, you know, she's lost a lot of Jewish support because of the, or their stance on Israel and everything that's going on over there. So like.
All she had to do was get, if, if she got Shapiro, they won.
No, I don't think so. I, I, I still, I still don't think so. He, I don't think.
Shapiro would have actually, it would be a lot closer then.
But think about it this way, it may be a little closer, but think about it this way. Um, right? Biden picked Harris in twenty twenty because she was a female.
Yep.
Um, they were going after reproductive rights, you know, all of that stuff. Um, and did it help him win? Yeah, it helped him win. But I think people can look back now and go, oh, you know what? Maybe we shouldn't just vote for somebody because they're Jewish or they're this or they're that, you know, I mean, um, while I understand there would be a number of people probably from the Jewish side that would say, oh, you know what? She selected another Jewish person. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and vote for her. There's still gonna be a whole bunch of them that are PO'd about how they've handled Israel and aren't gonna vote for that.
Right. There, but I, I think that overall Shapiro is just an actual good politician.
Well, he's sorry about that.
No, you're good compared, compared to, well, okay, so not.
Compared to Tim Walls?
Haven't been a huge fan of Walls, okay? Just haven't been a huge fan of Walls. If, if you want to know the truth.
Minnesota's been mismanaged by their governors for twenty years, so.
Why would you, eh, eh, how, why do you end up at Walls? What good does it bring? You, and this is not part, yeah, this is not part of our topic list and I'm messing it all up. But why in the world, eh, Shapiro makes so much sense.
Well, absolutely. There, there, you could see a hundred reasons to pick Shapiro as, as your president, vice presidential candidate. I couldn't even pick one reason to pick Walls as your vice presidential candidate, because Minnesota's never been a state in question, right?
When, when, as classically, the classic line is when the whole country voted for Reagan, Minnesota was out there voting, voting blue.
Yeah, they, Walter Mondale was their guy, so.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and so I, I mean, I think, um, yeah, that, if you're a conservative person, you probably cheered the day that, that she made her vice presidential pick, so.
Um, do you think that Shapiro will be able to be a Democratic nominee for president in the future?
Boy, I don't know. Um, you know, I don't know that he has enough national poll.
Okay.
To be able to do that. I mean, you know, you know the guy's name, but let's just use a guy with big recognition name in, in the Senate, Chuck Schumer.
Yeah.
Right? Chuck Schumer could never run because he's so polarizing as a figure. Well, I would say the opposite is true of Shapiro. To me, he doesn't have enough visibility, right? I mean, name the most popular senators and, and house people from the opposite side of your political party, right? You can name them. Would Shapiro ever be one of those guys you could have named before we had this?
It'd be Newsom. If you're, if you're gonna talk about governors.
Yeah, or AOC or some of those, you know.
Right, yeah, if you want to senators and reps. But for governors, it'd be Newsom, that would be the, the one that I would know. Um, yeah, I don't think.
Right, there's not, there's not this pool that they have to pull from. So like, when you say, do you think Shapiro in the future would be able to run? He's gonna need to up his national game.
He needed to be vice president. He needed it.
Yeah, I think you're right, so.
What, what did you think about the LA Times choosing not to endorse a presidential candidate?
Again, you have so many of these people and, uh, entities, organizations that have endorsed Democrats before. Um, and I'm just gonna say it, now they don't wanna endorse the Democrat candidate, but they certainly won't endorse the Republican candidate because, you know, I mean, they've, they've demonized him with, yeah, so.
But, but isn't it, shouldn't it have, Harris been an easy endorsement for the LA Times?
Auto workers? The United Auto Workers did not endorse a presidential candidate. I think that was the, you know, like, going back to the fifties, they have endorsed a Democrat forever.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Eh, in a race like this, that just means that it is an endorsement?
Yes. Now, another thing why we're talking about this election stuff, how bad do you think some of these reports that are coming out of Congress and the Department of Homeland Security about border stuff, like, over the last two weeks, you, right? You see the report that comes out that says, hey, they knowingly released hundreds of thousands of criminals into our country, right? Now, yesterday, that report comes out that went to the Senate or House Judiciary Committee, one of the two, that said, hey, the Department of Homeland Security has canceled or dismissed over a million illegal immigrant hearing cases because they didn't file the paperwork on time or the right way. And somebody said, they're doing this on purpose. So now we have a million people that have illegally come into our country. Um, they're getting benefits from the United States government. They have no hearing case to be deported or anything else because we didn't do it the right way. Like, how bad do you think these things are gonna hurt Kamala and the, the, the Democrats right now?
Well, you think it should.
It should absolutely crush them.
So it should, but I'm, I'm curious, and that, that stuff is way, way dear. But it feels like it's, this stuff that's coming out anymore, it feels like it's so much harder for it to influence minds because there's so much garbage. Be, there's so much noise, it's not garbage, there's so much noise that's now being, uh, out there that it's difficult for people to disseminate it into what's actually something that should influence a vote and what shouldn't.
Well, let's just go back in history, right? I mean, you're, you're absolutely right. The disinformation, the, 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 the noise. They've done that throughout history. Take a look at World War Two, right? The Americans put out this whole fake story that we were gonna invade, um, somewhere on the coast that we didn't invade and, and the Germans believed it, right? Like, even to the point where our soldiers were landing on Omaha and Juneau and all of those, and they called Hitler and they said, hey, can we release the whatever, you know, the twelfth SS to, to come help fight? And they're like, no, that isn't the real invasion. You know, I mean, so that whole campaign, I, like, that stuff has to change. We gotta get that noise out of there, that, that disinformation, because there's so much of it out there. Like I said earlier, people don't know what to believe and so they just don't believe anything. They don't believe the good, the bad or the wrong.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I like, uh, I like news sites, like this is an off-the-wall one.
Yeah.
VTnews.ai. I haven't done a lot.
Okay.
On it. But what's cool about them, and there's others that do this, where, um, I, I've thought about implementing something similar on the Dakota news site, where you get to go and look at a article. So here's one, Intel wins EU court battle over antitrust fine.
Okay.
Don't know really anything about it, but then you can click on it and you can get like five, ten articles. So this one has fifteen sources. Fifty-five percent of them is left coverage.
Yep. And also it tells you.
It tells you, yeah, it tells you the skew. And so then you can go through and read from both sides.
Yeah.
And be able to get better and it helps cut down some of that stuff.
Have to check that one out. I, you know, I, I, so when I go out and try and find information on a similar story, right? I'll actually go to Fox News website and I'll go to MSNBC's and I'll go to CNN's fourteen forty, you know? And then you listen to some of the podcasts, you know, and, and I'll, I'm not gonna lie, I, I listen to even some of the, the liberal stuff and it's painful to listen to, but you wanna hear both sides. Um, but I mean, the spin is so far out of control on some things. It, it's, it's mind blowing. Um, and, and you hope, I think across the country that people are using their intelligence and their common sense, but some of them are just eating up and I'm not gonna say one side or the other, both sides. Some of them just eat up whatever they're pitched and they're like, oh yeah, well, that's what I believe, you know, and I mean.
Money.
Yeah. Now, are you gonna, um, early vote? Early voting starts next Monday here in, uh, in Minot and Ward County Admin Building?
I think I should. Yeah, I think that's gonna, I'm going to vote and I think that would be the.
I have early voted. I, I started early voting about seven years ago for the first time and I will early vote every time there's an election.
Nobody there.
There isn't. I mean, you walk in at nine o'clock in the morning and there's like two people and you get in, you get out and then, and I mean, while I understand some people love the election day, stand in line and do that whole thing. Um, unfortunately, I, my five-year-old and my seven-year-old, or six-year-old now and seven-year-old, they have better things planned for me. So I got more to do than stand in line and wait, wait to vote, so.
Either in two thousand twelve or twenty sixteen, I can't remember which one, I voted and I would, I went after work on election day. And that was one of the most miserable two hours of my life.
So when I lived out in Colorado for those seventeen years before coming back here, um, they did not have early voting out there where I was at. And, and so they had mail-in vote, you know, but you had to, you had to prove why you were gonna be gone or whatever it was. So we got to go stand in line, um, and you had to register out there. So we got to go stand in line to vote when it was actually election time. And there was one time I remember, um, and I, at, at this point, I was living in a small town north of Fort Collins. I mean, that's all basically one big area, but, um, there was two polling places. I think I, I, I stood in line for over an hour waiting to get in there and, and you know what I mean? That's a good thing, right? Because people are out voting, but man, it made it so much easier to be able to walk in there anytime during the day. They're not in, uh, you know, it, polls don't close at a certain time. So, I, you know, I would encourage people to get out and vote, uh, do the early voting because it's really nice. So, big, huge numbers coming in across the country for early voting too.
Which is interesting. It's interesting, isn't it? How is that going to affect things?
Well, it's favoring, normally early voting always favors the Democrats, right? At least from the last thirty, forty years, right?
Yep.
You know, now they're seeing this year, it's favoring the Republicans, which.
Mean it's gonna be less of a turnout though on.
Right. That's the fear. Is, is everybody just going out and voting early? Or are we seeing more people come vote now, you know, and we won't be able to tell that until election?
We won't know that till the day after election.
But now I'm gonna put you on the spot, since we don't know when the next podcast will actually be. What's your prediction for the election?
Oh, come on. I should have one more weekend.
Why? Well, what happens if we're not able to get together next week?
My prediction on the election.
Are you guys gonna do an election day?
We, we are, we, we thought about it.
Right? Um, cause we'll have city council the night before.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have our, like, we'll have our election day, might not talk, but we won't have one that night. We were gonna do a special one for election day, but we're like, honestly, nobody cares about what we have to say.
Oh, man, you should just get on there and run all day, like, yeah, twenty-four hour newscast.
Everybody's gonna be looking at, uh, every, everybody else. Um, I, I think it's gonna be tight.
Yeah.
I think that's obvious. Unless if some of this stuff that's coming out and there's these rumors of some major October surprises coming. So, so we're, how about we do this? We call it today. If, if election day was today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think Trump would win right now.
Okay. Do you think very narrow margin or do you think he, uh?
Nah, I honestly think it'll be a landslide one way or the other. I've, I've, for like the last month, I've just been like, whoever wins is gonna win by like, I, there's actually a technical point where it turns into a landslide. I don't know what that is. But they'll, they'll win by thirty, forty electoral.
Once, I think, I think the, the level is three hundred, three hundred electoral votes. Once it's over three hundred electoral votes, I think they call it a landslide.
Yeah, so, well, then I do think there'll be a landslide one way or the other, because I think what's going to happen is a little bit like it happened last time where it was like these, all these tight races and they all fell one way.
Yeah.
I think that's probably what's going to happen again.
Well, okay, I, I, I'm the opposite. I think, uh, if Trump wins, it's a landslide. And if Kamala wins, it's as close a race as it was in, in twenty twenty. And a lot of people will question a lot of things at that point, right? I mean.
So do, uh, do you think it'll be a two sixty-nine, two sixty-nine?
No, I don't think there'll be any ties. I think you're gonna see Trump somewhere at three fifteen and, and her with two twenty-something or whatever the difference is right there, so.
Right, yeah. Interesting.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, cause, and, and so in twenty twenty, um, Biden ended up getting three hundred and six.
Did he get to three hundred and six?
And, but what happened was Arizona fell his way, Georgia fell his way, Pennsylvania fell his way, Michigan and Wisconsin. They were all very close.
Yeah.
But they all fell his way.
Yeah.
And that's where I think they'll be close within the states.
Yeah.
But they'll all fall the same way.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Wisconsin may not fall red.
Well, I, I mean.
But.
Again, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the polling and the real, real clear politics average of the polls.
Yeah.
Um, that to me is the biggest indicator of what's actually happening in the country. I mean, because they stand behind it, they do their research, they pull polls that are not outliers, but are very common and, and, and they believe in. And then they give you the averages. And, and I mean, if Real Clear Politics is saying, hey, Trump's gonna win by two or three percent.
Probably gonna happen.
And, yeah, it's probably gonna happen. And he underperforms in polls, as they've always stated, stated before. I think you're looking, um, at some big numbers.
Yeah, for sure. Which will, which would be interesting. I mean, eh, as, as Trump says, too big to rig.
But I mean, the, absolutely. The thing that's crazy about this election though, is, is if you take a look at where Trump is going, where Kamala is going, where they're doing their interviews and everything like that. Um, Trump goes a little bit to the battleground states and hearing that, but he's so comfortable right now, I believe, with the polls in there. He's doing stuff in Minnesota, which has never been on the, on the table. He's doing stuff in New York, which has never been on the table. Like, I think we're gonna see something happen this time that's very similar to what happened with Reagan back in the eighties.
So you're saying, you're saying that blue states might go red?
Absolutely. Wow. Or states that have been blue more frequently than not in the past. I think you're gonna see some red. But I mean, if they honestly believe that New York State is on, on the, on the docket to be pulled, like, that's insane. That, the last time that happened for a Republican was when? Nineteen eighty.
With Ronald Reagan, right?
Yeah, with Ronald Reagan.
So, yeah, that'd be crazy. That'd be crazy, dude.
Or no, not, not eighty, eighty-four, eighty-four in his follow-up, yeah, his second term, so. So anyway, what else? What do we got? Nothing much statewide. How about, oh, you got something else?
No, did you enjoy city council? Or, here, here we go. So twenty twenty, Joe Biden beat Donald Trump in New York by two million votes, almost on the money.
Yeah, two million votes. What was the percentage? Does it say?
Sixty point nine percent to thirty-seven point eight.
Right. And so now they said, um, about two weeks ago, that polling coming out of New York shows it as close as forty-five, fifty-five.
Oh, wow. I mean, that's a huge step.
That's giant. Yeah, that's giant compared to what we've seen in the past. And I mean, again, I think what you're seeing nationally is a lot of people who have always been told to vote this way, um, on, on the, on the Democrat side are now realizing that the Democrats aren't the party of the people, the average people, the middle class, the, the workers, the union guys. They're the party of the rich and famous. I mean, you know, like they said the other day, and it couldn't have been more stark when they showed it in the news. Kamala's hanging out, um, with some rapper and somebody else at a, at a fundraiser and Trump's in McDonald's handing food through the freaking window. Like, what, who is the person you're honestly believe has your best? Who is the person you're honestly believe has your best interests at heart? I I mean, it's an easy question to ask.
Very interesting for sure. All that's going on there. City. This is the safer subject. We've we've spent 54 minutes or so talking about
54 minutes about election stuff?
Talking about the scary stuff.
He wanted to hear that much from me, dude. Nobody.
Yeah, they wanted to hear from you. They definitely didn't want to hear from me.
Well, I think we could, hey, guys, put some uh put some notes on our on this podcast. Say who you like listening to more. So Jonathan and I can figure out this battle of who's who's the least favorite.
We know that, we know you wanna hear Rob, especially on the next subject.
All right, what do we got for city council stuff? I I thought the meeting the other night.
First one or two hours? I don't know if it's first one. I think you guys early on had one that was kinda short.
Well, I I mean, again, not that they blend together, but there's been some long meetings in there, so you know, but I I mean, that one was about an hour and a half long. I I feel like there was a couple of things that we should have talked about that we didn't talk about that we're probably gonna see come back now at a later date. So I mean, you know, I could we have made the meeting a little longer? We probably could have, but there was some interesting stuff in there. You know, we talked about the RVs and the campers and you know, I I think the city had come to us saying, hey, you know what? We're just gonna make it so people can't park on the street from midnight to 5 AM. Well, the majority of the council thought that that was overly restrictive, so they voted that down. So I don't know, you know, I didn't even ask after the meeting. Does that mean now the city has to come up with another iteration of what they wanna do? Or are we just leaving what's in place in place and not gonna do anything about it? So there was, there was no follow up there.
Tough one right there. That's a really tough one because I I don't know that there is a
Well, I mean, there's so many different sides, right? And and here's the thing, I understand, you know, I my neighbors have boats and campers and stuff like that. And if they're gonna park it outside for a little while, they tell us, hey, we're bringing it home to get it ready to go out. We're bringing it home to get it ready to put in storage, whatever it is, you know? And it's about, as we talk about on the city council, being a good neighbor, talking to your neighbors and being a good friend. But what you have then are the people, and and I have this right on my cul-de-sac. So as you come into my cul-de-sac for about 40 yards, there's no houses on either side. It's the side yard of these and then open space and then an open space area here and you know, a couple townhomes that are tied together. But so the townhomes over here on this street, they have three car garages and there are three of them in a row. Well, there's one of them there that doesn't like to park in their driveway, so they'll routinely come down and park in our cul-de-sac right on the edge there, right? So they don't have to walk very far and back get back to their place. Or the guy that lives at the end of the cul-de-sac will park his pickup in his boat over in the cul-de-sac. And so I get it, you know, I I understand the people that wanna have their stuff and and need some time to do things. What I don't understand is the people that are, they have so many other vehicles and things going on that they can't park in their own driveways? That they need to park it on the street and leave it there for a week. I mean, and why am I, why do I complain about that? Well, because in the winter, when you have a 20 to 25 foot wide area to turn into and it's icy because we know, you know, the streets around here sometimes stay icy. When that happens and you go to turn into your cul-de-sac and there's somebody parked here and you know, you start sliding, you're like, oh shit, I'm gonna hit somebody. Excuse my French, you know, but I'm, you know, you you get scared, you get nervous. And so like, I don't wanna be overly restrictive to the people that need it. But you also have to realize that there there's the bad actors out there and that's the problem we always have, right? Yeah. Right? But I mean, you you routinely, and like I I was saying this the other day, you got five people out of 100 that are doing the wrong thing and they're gonna wreck it for everybody else because you can't trust them to do the right thing, the good thing, or the neighborly thing.
Yeah.
You know, so
Absolutely.
So I mean, it's it's tough in that situation and and was what the city brought the other night overly restrictive? Yeah, it it probably was. I voted for it anyway because, you know, I mean, there has to be something done, but in in this instance, you know, like, I I think I I think we have to have some common sense. And and again, like we talk about the, they think, because Alderman Pittner is a contractor, right? So he'll go park a vehicle in front of somebody's place while they're there working. And that's that's one thing, but I mean, you know, like you bring a, let's say it's his place and he brings his, he brings his trailer home and he parks it in front of it for two weeks because he's gone on vacation instead of parking at the lot or whatever. And I'm not, I'm not picking on Paul. I'm not saying he's done that. I'm just using it as an example. But I mean, those are the types of things that we're trying to to stop, right? We have down around the corner every summer, one of our neighbors brings home an RV and they park it out in front of their house for the summer. And they run an extension cord from it into their garage or their house or whatever and have electricity. And then I believe they have family come and stay with them and they stay in the RV and it's like
Too far.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there's the common sense. If you wanna do that, that's fine. Park it in your driveway. Don't park it on the road, right? Park it in your driveway. We don't care if you do that. So yeah, I mean, that one's, you know, there's, and there's a lot of emotion behind it from people that have campers and RVs and boats and 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 all those things. And I get that, so.
Do I know one thing that stood up about the council?
What?
There was this guy there that wore a Sioux shirt.
Was there?
It's you. You had the little Sioux icon.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I had, I had my, hey, I told you, I'm a U N D Sioux guy. I will always be a Sioux guy. And until they get rid of that new nickname that I don't like, I I'm I'm gonna call him the Sioux.
That's hilarious.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate you taking so much notice of that, though. Like you could, I I did, I I brought my hoodie. Okay, you know, cuz I talked about how cold it was up there. I don't know if somebody in the city was listening to me. Well, I didn't have to have it on, because they had the heat in there. It said it like 72 and it was actually blowing warm. We joked about it. Now, here's another thing I heard too, and you guys don't hear this. I guess somebody told me on the council, we were sitting there talking, that the Blue Rider has city council bingo. Every Monday night that we have a city council meeting. Are you, have you heard about this? And and somebody come talk to us about this. If this is a thing, I wanna, I wanna see one of the bingo cards. But apparently they'll be like, mayor has sport coat on. You know, city manager does this, Alderman Fuller does this, you know, they have like, they make up these bingo cards on a weekly basis. And I guess they play bingo and if they, if you get bingo, you get a free beer or something like that, why the city council meeting streams or whatever at the bar?
Anything for viewership, right?
Well, hey, any publicity is good publicity, right? So I I wanna know about this, this city council bingo. Somebody out there at the Blue Rider, if you wanna reach out to me or Jonathan, I wanna hear about this cuz I think this is hilarious.
Right. Make sure uh make sure this next city council, you watch the react video too. Because we're gonna do a react video, so make that the stream that you guys have going on.
Oh, there you go.
What's your bingo?
Now, being a shorter meeting, how did you guys like as the general public watching it, what'd you think?
I mean, as a general public, great. As far as my not talk, it was a bummer.
Well, it does give you a lot to work with, doesn't it? Is that what you want us to do then going forward is keep in mind that we gotta give Jonathan material?
Yeah, you guys gotta think about us a little bit more.
You guys had Travis on. I mean, you guys had good talk about the stuff that was on.
Oh, man, it was a good talk about Northern Plains Ag. Definitely interesting deal about Minot and development. Sounds like things are getting better, but I know you guys are working on that.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a lot of things out there. You know, there's still that, I believe that connotation that mine it's tough to do business with. And so we're looking at changing and working on some things. We've had a couple of meetings. I know I was privy to one with the minor builders association. A lot of their members, contractors, builders came in and sat down with some folks from the city, you know, engineering, planning. All the different departments that needed to be there. I was there for a portion of it. And and we got to hear where they say some of the complaints or the the inefficiencies may be. And so now we're talking about how can we fix those things and what do we need to do to go forward to make it easier, you know?
Right. Yeah, for sure. So and I don't wanna spend a lot of time on the subject of it, but I think, thought it was interesting with the property. First off, I think it's great that you guys are looking at these leases more in depth. Because having having a lease that's on the books for five years or 10 years without people reviewing is incredible. Like, that's a long time.
It is. And I mean, I I understand why it was done. You know, I mean, if you go back into when this was done. So you're referring to the Mickelson lease, right? That he leases land from the city. I think when they did that back in the day, because they realized that there may be something there, they just said, hey, let's put this in place so we don't have to worry about it going forward. And at some point, you know, but that's the thing, we're gonna need to revisit it at some point in the future, I think. We didn't talk about it the other night. I had asked for it to be brought back because I thought I was, there was so many different amendments being made to that thing. So I thought I was on the portion that voted for it with regard to one thing. And it was actually, they looked at a different vote where I was one of the ones against it. So I couldn't bring it back. I'd gone out and spent a fair amount of time and and done my research and looked at all of this stuff and and tried to figure out what was going on. But it it is, yes, I agree with you. We cannot have auto renewing leases and stuff like that. Because number one, city councils can change every four years.
Right.
So we shouldn't stick somebody 10 years from now with something we did. They should be able to look at it. And I and I agree 100% with with Alderman Blessam on that. That should have been removed. I think the language in there where we give, we each have a year where we can give verbal notice, written notice, whatever to exit out of the contract. I think that was great. But putting it out forbid, I I think that may be a mistake and it's something we need to revisit and I I believe at some point in the future we will.
Yeah, for sure. It was weird when it gets brought up and nobody says anything. I'm just saying like, we don't see that.
Right.
And that's basically what we were able to see, though, was when a motion that's been dead, killed, not dead, but it's been killed, gets brought back up, what the process is. And it was interesting that it had to be somebody that voted.
Yep, it has to be somebody in the majority to be able to bring it back. And again, you know, and I, after I had been out there and looked at the property. Because a- again, if you go back to the meeting before this last one, where we said, hey, we wanna remove this, do this and do this. The city manager, Harold Stewart, and Jason Sorenson from Public Works, who's kinda over this lease, they were trying to tell us some information that we probably weren't hearing as a council or it wasn't spelled out to us the way that I think it should have been maybe communicated. Or we could have used more information cuz and I apologized in the email. I simply said to them, I think we made a mistake here and we probably need to relook at this. And I apologize if you guys were trying to tell us that and I didn't hear it. So the email went out. We talked about bringing it back and then it, right before the meeting, it was realized that I was not a part of the majority on the vote that they were considering. And so one of the others had to bring it back and we didn't really have a chance to talk about it. Now it is going out for bid, we're meaning Jason Sorenson is going to put a bid package together to put out to the public. I think when that comes to us to approve, there's gonna be some more discussion about it, but I can't, I can't prove that. I mean, it'll be a different motion at that point, so.
Completely different game.
But yeah, I mean, you know, it it is an interesting process to see because, you know, not everybody is well versed in Robert's rules of of decorum or whatever they call them. So you know, I mean, it's, I, again, I and I simply asked after the meeting, I said, how come nobody said a week and a half ago when I sent that email that I was able to bring it then and could have worked through this, you know, I mean, we we literally had one of the shortest meetings we're probably ever gonna have as a city council. This would have been an ideal time to talk about it.
Right.
It'll be on one of the next ones.
Yep, it'll work out in the long run.
What other things on the city council stuff did you guys?
I mean,
We talked about the flood control.
Yeah, with the Maple diversion, right?
Yeah, I'll be interested to see what that, what those estimates and those bids actually come back at because
30% higher.
Well, I I'm gonna tell you right now, well, again, I understand flood control is important. We cannot, as a city and a community, keep absorbing 30% plus increases in price. We can't do it. So, but I'm interested more to see, you know, not only that bid, but what it's gonna cost us to move 11 more homes now on top of the original four or five that we were gonna, so.
That's not good.
Buy out and and help them move.
Right. Very interesting. Yeah, I'm looking at my notes on that. Interesting stuff, man.
Yeah.
It seems like I, yeah, I've talked, I've said a lot about flood control. Maybe it's not all good, but it just seems like it never ends.
It it is a never ending thing. And I mean, is as far as the way we're doing it right now, it's gonna be 30, 40 years into the future, which probably not healthy.
Yeah, so for sure, for sure. No, good city council. You got, there was a personal appearance when the councilman got called out.
Yeah, or Mr. Worsaki did not like, you know, what Scott had to say, I guess regarding, you know, the chamber using their pulpit, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, I don't
And do do you feel like, so when you're looking at that for yourself, not for Scott, Scott's his own deal, he gets to make his decisions. But do you feel like there was a line crossed where you have to be careful about also when you're a proponent of something, where you have to be careful about defending?
I don't feel like Scott said anything in support of measure four. No, see, and that's just it. Scott has never, that I'm aware of, I'd have to go back and double check every single comment because somebody's probably gonna call me out. Yeah, you missed this one.
They'll be there for you.
I don't ever remember him sitting up on the dais and saying anything about measure four and what we should or shouldn't do. What he said there was that you should not take money from the city. Because your entity, whether you say it's separated or not, i- in most of the constituents' eyes, is one entity. And then you go out and and you say something, first you give money to the organization that opposes the constitutional member that the people in this city, this county and this state brought to the bear. Like, if you're gonna take any funding from local people, then you shouldn't have anything to say about it. And and I don't think Scott stepped over any lines like by doing that.
I, yeah, I didn't feel like he did either. So this is a good council.
It was, you know, I mean,
Good change of pace.
It's nice to to not be there for four and five hours a lot. I mean, we've had some big meetings with the the budget stuff. Flood control stuff, you know, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of things and since we, since I got elected to the council on on July 1st. And so it's not bad to have one of those those quickies like that. I mean, it was, you know, I I got home, was able to give my boys hug and kiss goodnight and, you know, say prayers with them before bed, which normally on Monday city council meetings, that doesn't happen.
That's not part of the agenda.
But
So good stuff, man.
Well, I'm sure the next one will be long.
I'm sure
You guys will have more material to work with, so.
Getting no sleep that day, getting no sleep the next day.
It's gonna be a huge week that week, isn't it? So, all right, well, that's it for us today, guys. I wanna thank Jonathan again for being here. Again, reach out to us if anybody would like to get on the show and talk about any specific topic, wanna see us talk about anything. Or get on there and leave us comments. Tell us what you think. We're gonna start doing these a little bit more. You'll see them right after we kinda, right after we record them. And what we hope to do in the future is get on there and be a little more interactive with people while we're talking. So have a great week. Everybody get out and vote in a couple of weeks and thanks for tuning in.